This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Joint Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. The time is 5 o'clock PM. And I will turn it over to Josh for a roll call, and then I will turn it over to Katrina for introductions.
Thank you, Mayor. For our council members, we have Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lichten. Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
And Councilmember Storset.
Here.
All seven present and accounted for.
Here.
And on the planning commission side, we have Commissioner Crossing.
Here.
Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Soltis.
Here.
Commissioner Agrena.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Chair Hoeksmo.
Present.
And Commissioner Brown. I see Commissioner Brown is here, but it looks like he's muted.
He's webbing her.
Here.
Okay, we have all seven planning commissioners accounted for as well.
Hey, wonderful. All right, Katrina, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council and planning commissioners. Really excited to hold this meeting in 2022 with there's some new faces and some older, more seasoned faces here from a city perspective. And this is the first joint planning commission council meeting in, at least since I've been over on this side of the building. And it's really nice to see all of you here and noting how much community support and care there is for our planning of our, the future of our community. Tonight, really, we have an hour. It's not that long. And we have two primary objectives that we would like for council and planning commission to, two primary objectives that we'd like to accomplish by the end of this hour. And one really is just introductions. I know that there's new council members that are, have not had the pleasure of meeting or working with our planning commissioners before. And so we'd like to give the planning commissioners each an opportunity to introduce themselves to the council and put face to name, noting that there's going to be a lot of planning related items coming forward for council consideration this year. And then the second, Josh is going to pull up when we get there, the council priorities for the next two years that were discussed at the retreat last Saturday, noting that at least two of those are, have, will have some impact and will be coming to the planning commission. Wanted to be able to give the council an opportunity to ask questions of the commission regarding those priorities as we work toward creation of a two-year work program to accomplish those goals. But before we get there, I don't know if all the council members are aware of the, what the planning commission is and what its role is. So just wanted to briefly go over what the planning commission's role is. And this is given authorities granted to the planning commission through RCW 3663. And this was all part of the Planning Enabling Act and the Growth Management Act. And really, the main purpose of a planning commission is to gain citizen review and recommendation to you, policymakers on a broad number of planning related items. It could be the comprehensive plan, it could be development regulations, it could be a program or a policy that is planning related that you would like input and feedback on. But they are really citizen, engaged citizens that, you know, have a, have perspectives of how the city should grow, change or not change, what our character should be, et cetera, that can provide valuable feedback to you, council, as you're considering some hefty initiatives. And I know that growth, climate change, et cetera, very important to this council. And I know this planning commission is ready and willing to step up to the challenge of providing you expert and citizen voices. Within the RCW, again, it, it goes over what the, what their powers are. There are some planning commissions in cities that look at plaques, for instance, or, or site plans. We don't have that set up this way in the city. Instead, the city council delegates their authority to the hearing examiner. And so you may, if you go to AWC conferences and hear people talking about plaques going to planning commission, that is not how the city currently has that established. For tonight, just want to let council know again, if you'd like to ask questions or seek feedback from the commission on your priorities, that is wonderful. Tonight, we're not here to delegate to them per se. We will be doing that instead through the comprehensive plan docket that will be coming forward to you at your February 14th meeting. And if the council finds and planning commission finds this helpful, we would like to make this an annual event, getting together of this commission and the council. And I believe that several council members talked about that at the retreat or at a previous meeting as well. One thing I wanted to just note prior to turning it over to introductions is there was a concern from the planning commission in 2019 and 2020 whereby many initiatives that the council was undertaking at that time were going forward under what our code classifies as direct consideration. And essentially, what that means is that something is of such a high priority or needs to get done in, in such a time, or the council feels that they have been able to analyze a full scope of any particular changes that it bypasses the planning commission. And the commission was frustrated about that and drafted a letter to the Mary Council at that time stating that they would like to be a part of the process, any of the planning related items, cop plan or development regulations. And so I really wanted to just call that out, that, you know, they felt that the lack of involvement and that their usefulness was not being utilized in order to craft code and policy that could make it an even better product. And so this meeting, really, I'd like to, you know, establish the, the relationship between council and the commission, know, you know, each other's face. And then also just to remind council that this is a citizen board that really wants to help us make our codes and our policies as Gig Harbor-y, if that's a word, as, as can be. And they really want to provide their advice and have it be taken into consideration as those initiatives are moving forward. And if there is general agreement on the two primary objectives with 50 minutes left, Mayor, if you're okay with just going around to planning commission and introducing themselves and maybe what interested them in the planning commission, and would that be acceptable to you and council?
It is to me. Yeah. Getting nods from council. Sounds good.
Excellent. Why don't we start with our chair, Chair Hoeksmo?
Thank you, Katrina. Yeah, Greg Hoeksmo, I have been on the planning commission now for about four years. I've been an activist in the city from way back in 2000, but was overseas for eight years. And so I kind of dropped off the radar, but since got back in 2012, spent many days and many city council meetings, offering my opinion about things and, and trying to help make our city a better place. I had the opportunity to be, apply for and appointed to the planning commission. And it's been a good experience at the beginning. As Katrina noted, we had, had some frustration. I became the chair when a number of the new commissioners joined. And we got to a point where we were kind of frustrated and saying, why are we here? And that's what generated a long discussion at one of our meetings. And that's when we sent the letter to you all. We are deeply appreciative of the fact that, that of your open mindedness and, and hearing our plea to want to help you best make decisions and, and, and represent the city. Because we know that you all have a lot to do. This is an outstanding group of people. They all participate every meeting. They listen to and present a wide variety of perspectives. And I think you have just an amazing group of people that is really going to be able to, to benefit you as you move forward with some major decisions, not the least of which is a big fat hot potato regarding short-term rentals. So anyway, I'm a retired Navy physician. I've lived in Gig Harbor since 2000. We bought a home down in the historic district at the, at the head of the harbor that was built in 1910. And so spent many days strolling the waterfront. I am involved in many other things around the community, park cleanups, Gig Harbor Junior Sail, the little kid you see sailing out in the harbor. I've been on that board for, for seven years. And anyway, it's a great place. Love living in Gig Harbor. This is where I'm going to die. And we've raised two kids here as well. So that's me and probably too long of a nutshell.
Thank you, Chair. Let's go next to Commissioner Krosick.
Okay, thank you, Katrina. John Krosick, I have been a Gig Harbor resident since 2010. I am retired. And prior to that, I had a 35-year career in local government. I spent 25 years as a county administrator in Oregon for Yamhill County. And I also had a short stint as a transportation planner for a year and a half. So that's one of the major areas that I am interested in is transportation in and through Gig Harbor, as well as alternative transportations, and that's pedestrian transit and biking. And my other big interest here on the planning commission is environmental, is that I want to see Gig Harbor maintain its character as a community of forests and water. And I think that's a very important issue for our city and as we look at development. I also want to second what Greg said about the excellence of the members of the planning commission. And I also want to talk about what an excellent chair Greg has been for all of us. So that's my little piece. I'll turn it back to you, Katrina.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Bradbury, I'd like you to go next. And note for the council that Commissioner Bradbury also serves on the design review board as well as a planning commission member.
Thank you, Katrina. My name is Larry Bradbury, obviously. I've been a resident here in Gig Harbor since 2006, when I retired from the Air Force after a 25-year career. Then I spent the next dozen years working for the Army as a, in an administrative function at Madigan Army Medical Center. Recently retired from that about a year ago. So now I'm, I'm engaged in different things around the community and with our church. I came on the board or applied for the board about, oh gee, what has it been, eight or nine months ago now? And my reason for doing that was to begin to get more involved in the community and have a voice in the kinds of development decisions that are, that are made by the different functional entities, including the city council, that, that define what our city will look like and how it will be in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Agrena.
Hi, I'm Shannon Greiner. And I'm, I moved to Gig Harbor in 2017. I'm the owner of Greiner Landscape Design. And I'm a certified professional horticulturist and a landscape designer. I moved here from Woodinville, and I've lived all over the country before that. I got involved with the planning commission about two and a half years ago. And my reason for doing that was to really learn more about Gig Harbor. And I thought, having lived all over, I had somewhat of a unique perspective. And as a tree-hugging dirt lover, I thought that we need a voice in what goes on in Gig Harbor. And that was really important to me. Thank you so much for joining us today or allowing us to join you. It really is, is nice for you to be, to be seeing you and meeting you. And I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown.
Yes, thank you. I am a retired businessman. I spent 40 years in computers and networking. And I moved into the city from Raft Island six years ago. And I've been on the planning commission for a couple of years now. I want to echo and join in with Greg and his comments about the relationship of the commission to the council. I'm, I'm very pleased to see this meeting here tonight. I hope we make good use of this. Personally, one of my hot buttons is I think we could improve greatly citizen input and citizen involvement in some of the issues. And I'll be advocating for trying some new and different ways to inform and perhaps agitate our citizens in the town to get them to let us know their opinions about some of the decisions that have to be made. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Bennett.
Chair, hi, I am Amanda Bennett. I work for the Navy as a cultural resources manager, mostly serve as an architectural historian. I'm a trained landscape architect. I came to Gig Harbor in 2015 from Seattle, wanted a better place to raise our kids. And I have two children at Swiftwater Elementary. We're very excited about the new school that just came in this year. And I wanted to be on the planet and come in primarily because when I was in Seattle, I was on the Pioneer Square Preservation Board. And really getting to be a part of, of the changes and things that were happening in Seattle at the time. And wanted to try and find some way that I could also continue that here in my new home. And I've really enjoyed being here. I'm very excited to get to meet all of you. I think this meeting is something that is very necessary. I've been on the planning commission for almost three years now. Also, that's it.
Great, thank you. And last but not least, Commissioner Soltis.
Good afternoon. I'm not normally that shy, but I just came off of shoulder surgery today, and you really don't want to see my picture. But I am about three years into my planning commission career. Just a little quick background, I have a BA in economics and masters in environmental science and in public administration. I spent the bulk of my career, actually almost all of it with NASA. Ultimately, I was the budget director for the space station program. So I got some budget creds. And I was also the facilities director for the Office of Space Flight, which includes four of the NASA centers. And that included energy, environmental and facilities kind of things. Probably the most important part of it is my dad was a city, was a city manager. So I heard a lot of that over the dinner table. So add that plus some policy background. I think I can help. I like the intellectual challenge that comes with being a commissioner. These issues that we are tackling are getting, seem like more and more complex. And of course, there's a comprehensive plan update coming up in a year or so. And that's going to be a really big deal. So there's a lot of great work ahead of us. So happy to be here. I want Gig Harbor to really be the very best place it can be. And willing to roll my sleeves up and get to work. Thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Council, as you can see, we have a very talented group of folks here that are dedicating their, their time to assist with policy and code-related items. And again, it just, I thank all of you for taking the time to be here. I know it was a long time coming from the planning commission side. Do any council members, I don't want to just introduce planning commissioners, if anybody else would like to introduce themselves or... I know it's a little awkward because we're on Zoom. If we were in person, people could jump in and laugh, but you know.
I saw Councilmember Lichten's hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I just want to thank all of the commissioners. I'm Brenda Lichten. I am a first-term councilperson here. I've been in Gig Harbor since about 2015, so about six, going on seven years. Love it here. We moved here after our kids were kind of through school. They're in their twenties now. And we want to be here for the long haul. I love what I hear about citizen engagement. We work for the citizens. That's, I believe, at the core of what all of us believe on council. And I just want to appreciate you and say thank you for sharing your time and talents. It's a very talented group, I can tell. And I just want to know that you're, you're being heard on increasing citizen engagement. Several council people, we've discussed different ways of increasing citizen engagement and really getting involved and taking advantage of your activism and your, your work. So thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Barber.
I was just gonna go next and sort of echo some of what Councilmember Lichten said. I'm Mary Barber, and I moved to Gig Harbor in 2014. And I am really passionate about the city and what it has to offer. Councilmember Lichten and I have spent quite a bit of time talking about ways to engage more of the public. I have a background in strategic communications and public relations, so have done a lot with outreach. And I think there are definitely some, some easy and some way more challenging ways that we can involve the public. And I'm looking forward to helping to share some of those. But the other thing is, I wanted to also come from the perspective of a former Parks Commissioner, along with Councilmember Henderson. And I think I don't necessarily need to speak for him, but I think I can, in that we understand your concern that you have and appreciate you being here tonight and all the service that you offer. I know that we had some of the same concerns last year as well, raised those with council and got some, some things fixed as well. We also have a fabulous new Parks Manager, and that helped as well, to have someone in that position. But I guess I would say that I understand where you're coming from, and I hope you feel like we are here to listen to you and to work with you, not at cross purposes at all.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yes, I'm Councilmember Rothenberg. And I recall the letter that the planning commission sent to council. And up until that time, I, when I got a copy of the letter, it's like, what, we have a planning commission? And it just amazed me that you weren't more engaged. So my comment is, we said we were going to have one of these meetings every year. And I'm, I'm thinking if we're truly engaged with one another and we're exchanging ideas and we have plans, why are we only meeting once a year? If we met at least every six months, at least we could come back around in six months and say, well, what did we talk about in February and where is that right now? I know we'll be chatting independently before now and then. But I think it would be a good idea to, to have something in six months to, you know, for some accountability and, and to say, where are we with what we spoke about? So that's my comment. And thank you all for being planning commissioners. It's, obviously, in the past, it's been a, an unapplauded position, but I really welcome your input. You sound like a bunch of great professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess Councilmember Storset.
Yes, first just want to start by thanking everybody. Really impressed by hearing your backgrounds. Really appreciate your, you know, your commitment to the, to our community as well. I think there's a lot to learn. You know, I'm also a new council member, so first term, first time doing this. So trying to absorb as much as possible. So very grateful for, for this council or commission, sorry, mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm Roger Henderson, the, I guess, last of the four new council members. I can't claim to have lived in Gig Harbor for 50 years. I moved here in 2018. Love it, from the great state of California. I am a registered civil engineer, retired from the US Army Corps of Engineers, and have a bachelor's degree in environmental planning and management. I think Commissioner Brown talked about some hot topics or hot buttons. I've got a couple myself, transportation, climate, and forests. For those of you that followed my campaign, you kind of know where I stand on those issues. And hearing tonight, the experience that you folks have, I think, I think the council would, at least from my point of view, I would like to reach out and tap that experience even more than we have in the past. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Wood. You're on mute.
I've been on the council for four years. And I just want to say thank you because you have a wealth of information and knowledge that's really important. I was especially, I felt really especially good this evening to hear so many of you want to get involved in climate issues. As we know, climate, climate change was taken out of the comprehensive plan in about 2018. I look forward to you folks putting it back in. And I also look forward to hearing from you and your knowledge, what you would like to work on when it comes to climate and when it comes to sustainability. It is a, it is a vital thing. And as we go forward to Vision 2050, as we have different bills come down through the legislature, we know that we're going to have to do things. But it's your voice, and it's your experience that I'm also interested in hearing from on what you would like to work on when it comes to climate change. So thank you for being here. And thank you for working and volunteering and donating your many hours.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you. I will echo everything all the other council members have said. And I'm wondering, Mayor and Ms. Knutson, if I can ask the planning commission a question, is that appropriate? Okay, my question is, a couple of you have made comments about, you know, frustrations about things not coming through the planning commission. So I'm wondering today, what kind of things are not coming before you, issues, projects, what kind of things are not coming before you that you feel should be? Because we would like to know, I'm sure.
Well, I think I can respond to that. First of all, I'd like to preface by saying that since we sent the letter and since we got a positive response from council, we have seen a relatively quick, not immediate, 180-degree change in, in the way of doing business. And so in the past couple of months, we have been actively engaged. We've, you know, we've, I think we've only, I don't know, we've had any, any meetings canceled. And for about 18 months, it seemed like three out of four, we're getting counsel, excuse me, canceled. So, so I would say that the things that are coming to us now are exactly the sorts of things that, that we want to wrestle with, the issues that have been brought up tonight, you know, transportation, growth, preservation of, of Gig Harbor, any things that are happening, the, the mandates that are coming down from the state regarding, you know, the duplexes being allowed, those sorts of things is, are, are things that I think all of the commissioners are, are also passionate about. And so I know, I know that, that one of the issues that's been discussed at more than one of our meetings is, do we, as a planning commission, have the opportunity to, you know, yes, we, we understand that we get our marching orders, as it were, from the council. And we follow you, your lead on what your priorities are. But do we, as a planning commission, have an opportunity to say, hey, what about X, Y, or Z? And so I think with having a meeting like this, and especially if we follow up sooner than a year, I think that kind of interchange is going to be able to happen. And I would say, I certainly open the floor now to anything that the commissioners want to, want to throw out there. As far as a more direct answer to your question, Councilwoman Benson, but Denson. So go ahead. Councilwoman Benson, but Denson. So, go ahead.
Yes, and, and forgive me, Commissioner, is it Crossick?
That is correct. You, you hit, you got them beautifully. Yeah, I'd like to second what, what Greg said, that I think things have turned around. And I think that's a very welcome development. And actually, the short-term rentals was referred to as a hot potato, but it's a very interesting hot potato as I've looked through what some of the other cities have done. And I'm really looking forward to tackling that one. So I'm glad that the city council forwarded that one to us.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown.
Well, I would like to see the Planning Commission help sort out the citizens' views on priorities. Things like the senior center versus a home port in terms of priorities. And then, I, I, I think we, we could, we could do a good job of encouraging folks to consider these things, communicate them through the Planning Commission, and then consolidate that back to the council. Because I, I think that's, that's something that would be of, of value and in terms of how we go about planning for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners that wish to comment? Okay, well, I'm, I'm Mayor Markley. I haven't met a lot of the, a lot of you. Actually, I don't know if I've met any of you in person yet, but I'm so pleased to have you with us tonight. And, you know, we really are looking at activating our commissions a whole lot more than, than they have been. And that goes across all, all commissions. But the Planning Commission is really very vital to what, what we're doing with, with how the city looks, how it runs, how it operates. And, and what is so important is that citizen communication. You know, you all have the ability to have that two-way conversation with our citizens, whereas in a regular council meeting, we, we don't get that two-way communication. It's just someone comes and makes a comment and we don't even get to comment back. And, and so it's kind of a, it's a little more disjointed than I, than I would like, but that's kind of just the format of our meetings. And so we really value when our commissioners are so engaged with the public and are able to really get, get that important feedback and then provide that to the council. It's just critical, especially now, nowadays, with everything going on with COVID and being virtual. There's just that, that communication barrier has been there for, for a while. And, and so we really value very much your hard work and your hours that you put into this and your dedication to the city. It's, it's really phenomenal what, what you all do. And so I just wanted to say thank you as well. And I love the idea of meeting every six months. So maybe we can make, make that a, make that a thing. I think everybody would, would, is nodding in agreement. So Katrina, and we'll work on that with the schedule, just do a, a regular six-month meeting with you all. I think that would be wonderful. And I'll go ahead and turn it back over to you, Katrina, in the interest of time. Oh, thank you, Mayor. So maybe to pivot a little bit, I know Councilmember Denson had a really great question. And I think, you know, maybe instead of going over the priorities, the council has questions or inquiries for the commission, the commission members, maybe do we instead want to do that? Would that be more helpful for you, council? Um, Councilmember Wood, we'll, we'll just open it up to, to council for comments.
Sure. So I'd like to address, and I don't remember which commissioner asked this, maybe it was the Chair, about some items at the commission level being started, at the commission level, being brought up at the commission level. And I think if I remember correctly, I had this conversation with Director Knutson, that in fact, some items can be initiated at the commission level. Am I right about that, Katrina?
You are correct, Councilmember Wood. The Planning Commission does have special authority within our code to propose comprehensive plan amendments or development regulation amendments for the council's consideration and initiation.
Thank you. So I look forward to seeing what you guys, what you folks, ladies and gentlemen, would like to bring forward on your own. I know some things for me, and what I would like to see, if you would like to see them, we have some low-hanging fruit that we can do, I think, before we work a lot on the comprehensive plan for the climate things. And, and some of the things that I think we, you guys can work on right away, or for example, things that only affect the city, such as perhaps some energy regulations within our city buildings. We know that we have LED lights on all of our streetlights, but are our city buildings LED? That's an energy thing to think about. And maybe there are some other things that you have thought about that are low-hanging fruit that would be easy to get working on right away. I know a number of you mentioned climate issues and maybe that's trees, maybe that's energy efficiency in our buildings. But if, if you've got something that you would like to work on with regards to climate, I sure would like to hear your thoughts on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm thinking that it might be a good idea if we were just to share our priority list so that the Planning Commission has an idea of kind of where we're going. Clearly, this priority list had a lot of sub-priorities and sub-tasks or sub-wishes, whatever we want to call them. I'm hoping at some point after we get our full write-up, I think, from the facilitator that we should share that with the Planning Commission, so they have a good idea of where we're coming from as the city council. I'd still like to hear what they're thinking about right now. As, as Councilmember Wood mentioned as well, there's a lot of stuff coming, a lot on our plate. I'm not even sure whether once every six months is enough to meet with the Planning Commission, because everything seems to start here.
Thank you. I believe I did send that report out to council and to the departments. But if you didn't get that, please let me know. And Katrina, certainly feel free to, to forward the, the PDF. The pri, yes, the priorities. I think it was the PDF. You can forward that on to the Planning Commission, absolutely. Excellent. We'll do that tonight. So commissioners, you should expect that in your email boxes. I guess Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, I just had a comment and I was pleased to hear that a planning commission can reach out to citizenry and get more ideas of what their priorities are. But I, I just want to caution about a potential disconnect that can certainly become over, can be overcome. And that is that we have our priorities based upon funding. And what can be funded now, what can staff accomplish? And what may seem like we should list these things, one, two, three, and four, when it comes down to it, item number three, maybe the funding is not there, can't be there unless we get some kind of grant. So the way to overcome this, I think, is to have better communication or have the Planning Commission better engaged in, and knowing what our budget is and where the money is and what possibly can, can be accomplished. We can amend the budget as we go down the road. But to engage the public and imply that, yes, your priority is important and we'll get it done. And I certainly don't mean to insult the, the background or the professionalism of the knowledgeable planning commission. But let's all, let's like really open up those lines of communication. So we don't go down a road and, and make promises or imply things that, that can't actually occur.
Mayor, if I, if I may, the Councilmember Rodenberg, you bring up a really good point. And we, we just had, after the council passed its budget in 20, what year are we in, 2021, we met with the commission and went over the entire planning division's budget with the commission. And we actually did that the year prior as well. And I believe the commission found that very helpful to kind of see what the council's thinking about their work being for the next year and kind of, okay, we're going to do, you know, we're working on trees, we're working on a UGA analysis, we're working on things like that. But to further what you said, I just had a thought pop in my head about, you know, our budget process. And it may, we may want to ask planning commissioners, solicit their feedback to provide to council as you're going through the budget in order to, I mean, that would be the time, I, I guess, to, to bring those work plan items or potential work plan items up for the council to consider with the full scheme of the budget. That's a great idea.
I think it might be helpful also just for the council members to understand what, what typically happens around this time of the year after you've had your offsite is that, that Katrina and her staff will present to us what our annual work plan is going to look, look like. So that as the Planning Commission, we, we have an idea of what we're going to be studying. It gives us an opportunity to, you know, delve into some research if we know that a month from now, you know, item X is going to appear on our agenda. We also appreciate and have experienced the fact that an item might pop up and, and supersede something that, that was expected to happen on, on the March 3 meeting. But, but we have that flexibility, but it's also nice for us to have, to understand and have that backbone of what's going to happen over the next 12 months. And, and so we're looking forward to that. And, and I would also like to say, and, and that you, that this city has an amazing planning staff. I have honestly, I've, I've run hospitals with 1,100 employees as the chief operating officer. I have no idea how these people do it, how they keep up, how they keep their head above water, how they keep a smile on their face when they're doing it. We'll, we'll get a work product from them that, that might have 20, 30, 40, or 80 pages, and I can't even find a typo. And so that's the quality of work and it just makes our job so much easier. And they're just pleasant people to work with. So I, I wanted to get that in there.
Yes, we have the best, the best staff. Uh, yes, Councilmember Wood.
Yes, we also have, we started last year, I believe, getting a quarterly budget update. And I don't know if that would be of interest and helpful to you, but once a quarter, we get a report for every budgeted item and where it is and how it's proceeding in the work plan. So you might find that of interest as well. I think the first one is coming up, either the first or second council meeting in February. And it's, I think it's a good document. And if you want to know where different items are in the budget and the timeline, that's a really good document to have. It's a living document because it changes all the time. Also, one of the things we talked about in our retreat was a potential vision statement. And I, I want to read it to you because that may give you something. And we all, all the council members and the folks there, I think, were quite supportive of this visioning statement that came out of it. Gig Harbor leads the way in livability, environment stewardship, economic vitality, and municipal services. So I think those are the things that we really are, want to see focused on in the coming two years. And so, so as you're preparing and planning and thinking about what you would like to see, I think those are some items that are top on, most on our mind. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
I'm just adding to what Councilmember Wood just said. I wonder if you had mentioned earlier that Josh had our priorities on a screen that we could share with the commissioners. And it seems to make sense to share our vision, but also the prior, the five priorities that we agreed on as well. And one of, and not one of the first, that we agreed that the top priority has to do with our employee retention and recruitment issues. So I just, I want to say that going in is that that one is the one that we're all focused on because we want to make sure that Katrina and her team and all the wonderful people that work for the city stay there and that we get more people like them. So I'm hoping that we can do that. And maybe Mayor Markley, you can go through those.
Absolutely. I, City Clerk Sticker, do you have those, that on, to share on the screen?
I do. Let me pull it up here.
Great.
Mayor Markley, aren't some of those still being flushed out in detail?
Yes, so this is, um, this is the report that we received from the facilitator. And as I mentioned at the retreat, this is a, there was a lot of work put into this. And I was just so proud of our staff and our council for collaborating so well to put these priorities together. But there are a lot of bullet points that we will add, remove. There's a, there's study sessions coming up where we will kind of really hone this in. This is sort of a jumping off point, a starting point to get us on the right, right track. But there's certainly, I, I think this is also a living document that will move and shape and grow, you know, as, as we go. And so the, as, as Councilmember Barber mentioned, the very first priority was to develop a staff retention and attraction program. And the only bullet point so far under that is to come up with a DEI program to attack a larger pool of candidates. But there are many, many other things to add underneath this category, such as, you know, reinstating an employee recognition program. And, you know, getting input from our various departments about additional staff members that they need, need to add or would like to add in order to come up to a full capacity level. Even if it's, even if it hasn't been something that's been currently proposed in the budget, but they're finding that they still need extra positions. You know, all of those things will be added as bullet points as we go through these study sessions and we talk with staff and we talk with, with our commissions. The second priority was to provide more efficient and effective municipal services, such as filling gaps in public input and outreach on capital projects, which you all mentioned. So that's a joint priority of ours, increase citizen input. And again, the second bullet point was very similar, increase communications between the city and our citizens. Going right along with better understanding the community's needs and their surface service expectations, developing a citizen complaint form, developing a strategy for federal and state infrastructure funds. We're working closely with our lobbyists, both state and federal, and as well as all of our legislative officials. And just seeing where we can go with grants, you know, really utilizing the funds that are, that are coming, coming to us and how we can best utilize those funds. The third party, maintain our small-town character and historic preservation while growing responsibly. We know that we can't stop growing. We can't put a closed sign on Gig Harbor and say, we're closed, no one else can, can move here. That's not realistic. So we know we're going to grow, but there are ways we can grow responsibly where we don't lose our small-town feel, we don't lose that historic preservation that is, that means so much to you all and to us and to our citizens. So focusing on our character retention and kind of a redundant, you know, bullet there, a safe, livable, and attractive community, decreasing the distance to get to a park or an open space, so more walkability, more sidewalks, reduce traffic congestion by adding more sidewalks. So a lot, and there will be many other bullets, I'm sure, that will, will appear under, under all of these. The fourth priority was to create a climate and sustainability action plan. And one of the things that came up was to set up a climate sustainable action committee where we can really have committee members kind of deep dive into some of these things for protecting our, our environment and sustaining our environment, working on our urban forest tree replacement management plan. The city's already, you know, in process to try to purchase some acres and acres of, of forest that will not be touched, that will just be natural and, and just beautiful preservation. And then the fifth is develop a plan to support and enhance a dynamic and robust economy, which is very important, increasing the vitality of our downtown business district, but also uptown and Gig Harbor North. Develop a plan to increase the support to our local business community, attract larger employers in, in our industrial zone that, that, you know, we have Metagenics and we have a couple other, you know, really large industrial zoned businesses. And we'd like to see more of those, bringing more. And we'd like to see more of those, bringing more jobs, bringing more economic vitality to our city. Um, and then develop a strategy to maintain and enhance our commercial fishing. So um, again, many more bullets will be added to this priority list. But that just kind of gives you a a snapshot of where the council and staff were going at the retreat and the and the direction that we're that we're heading in. And the vision statement that Councilmember Wook read really encompasses all five of these priorities. And um, and and like Councilmember Rodenberg was saying, in in no particular order, really, I mean, the order will be kind of determined by funding capabilities, but you know, by the the budget. Um, but number one, that can happen no matter what. We we we, if we can't retain and attract our staff and come up to full capacity, we can't do anything else. So that that has to happen first so that we can provide the services that we want to provide for our citizens. And um, so, yeah, I I guess I would open it up to any commissioners for comments or questions about these top five um priorities.
Mayor, while people are maybe considering their questions, I may, I I may add to your very eloquent description of of the priorities that as Councilmember Rodenberg was was stating, the the five main priorities commissioners that you see here were identified. And then some of the bullets below were discussions that were had. But what we're doing on a department by department level is looking at these priorities right now and then considering um additional bullet points of how our individual um portion of the city could help to achieve those five priorities. So, you know, as Councilmember Rodenberg and the mayor mentioned, this is not an exhaustive list uh and it will be added to in further the council work sessions. But as as you all described, you know, kind of why you're on the commission and your hopes for the commission, you know, two, three, four, and five really are going to be within the purview of the Planning Commission. Um, you know, our our outreach and how we're going to do that, maintaining our small town character and historic preservation, that definitely is within uh the Planning Commission's purview uh while we're developing codes and policies for the future of the city, uh climate and sustainability. You know, that will be coming to this um, this commission as well. A a a forest management plan would absolutely be be coming through this commission. And then uh economic development, we definitely, the commission will definitely touch that as well. You know, even, you know, as we're looking at um, you know, uh short term rentals, but definitely in the comprehensive plan and when we're looking at our zoning and how we want to grow um and attract businesses and keep our current businesses here, those will be conversations that will be um helped by all of your expertise on the commission.
Absolutely. Were there any questions or comments? Um, yes, Commissioner Solstice, or Solthus, excuse me.
You got it. I I just wanted to make a point, it's probably obvious to everybody, but what the heck, I'll say it again. Um, there are co-benefits between a lot of these activities on the page that we need to recognize as we go forward. For example, if you bring in more manufacturing or more big businesses to the area, um, that reduces the miles that people have to travel to go to work, which reduces congestion, which reduces and uh pollution and things like that. So I always kind of try to keep my hat on for co-benefits because uh there's really a lot that you can gain uh to, and like that one point under number three, decrease distance to get to a park or open space where you could add on to work or to school or something like that. So um, that's a really important point that I think I always, I always have that in my back of my head to try to apply that when I see things look similar, but can have cross cross benefits.
Thank you for that. Any else? Okay, I've not seen any commissioners' hands, but any council members want to comment on uh these priorities? Uh, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess we're starting to approach that one hour limit. Do we have any next steps that either the council or the uh Planning Commission would like to take?
Um, Councilmember Henderson, I do have a couple of follow-ups here. Um, we will work to at least meet every six months. Uh, there was a discussion about Planning Commission potentially weighing in on um legislative items such as the Missing Middle Bill. And so we will, as staff, work to add that into the communication with uh with the commission. We will share the retreat notes with. Um, also send the quarterly budget item to um to the commission. And then I'm thinking, so that they're not working off the cuff, I know that it's um a lot of information to digest. Perhaps uh at the the next meeting, we can have a discussion with the commission and receive their ideas that we can bring forward for each of the the bulleted items, if that would be acceptable to council.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And I'm seeing lots of head nods from council and thumbs up, so yes, thank you. Um, yes, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Just as a reminder, uh Mayor Markley, would you tell me who the council person is that's the liaison to the Planning Commission?
Uh, we don't have a council liaison to the Planning Commission. I don't believe it's allowed um under our code. We have one to the Parks Commission. I believe that's the only council liaison that that we have.
Thank you.
Is that correct, K- Katrina?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
I do, I would like to state, though, that we can look at some options, I think, to get to what Councilmember Rodenberg's saying of having more um, maybe providing updates to council about planning commission, you know, how the projects are going so that you don't have to wait until it gets to you to see what their recommendation is. You know, we can look at a, some methods to try to get that to work out if that would help.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, yes, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, if I could be so bold um to suggest that the Planning Commission reach out sooner than and then by the next meeting, because that's by my math max, my math here, that would be in August. If they've got issues or things they would like to bring forward or things they could start working on sooner, I I think that would be good just to get things rolling. Like I mentioned before, there's a lot of stuff on the plate. You know, we could still meet in six months and say, okay, what you got? But gosh, if they've got something now that could be worked on sooner than later, that would be great.
I apologize, Councilor, Councilmember Henderson, I meant at their next, the Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
You can discuss this and then bring it back to the council during your work sessions on um on the priorities.
Okay, thanks. That's, that's actually perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that, that um you need not fear. You you know, this meeting has been a great meeting and we are not a shy bunch. And um, we will be more than happy to bring any information forward if we see things languishing or uh see opportunities. Um, and and since I've got the floor and we're running out of time, I I would like to put in the general plug that has been stated by a couple of um commissioners already. And that is that that um, we really want to get more public involvement. And it's great to see that that's on your priority list. And with the with the short term rentals, um, i- i- any opportunities you have on your mayor's blog, on your Facebook pages to inform the public that that the Planning Commission is, has this on their table. They're contemplating it now, they're going to have an open house. Um, and and you know, we, you all got fifteen responses to a a a public request about the short term rentals. They were all impassioned. Um, but there are plenty more than fifteen people out there that feel passionately about that topic. And so on those um, um controversial, for lack of a better, better word, uh uh items, we would really appreciate your support in in um uh trying to roust up some public comments uh and and provide them to the Planning Commission.
Yes, we can work with our tourism and communications director to maybe have some social media posts go out, make sure it's on our, um, I I know it's on our website, it was noticed today, the meeting on the seventeenth, that you're having, the public hearing. Um, I did mention it at the chamber forum this morning as well, and I continue to mention that on those Thursday morning uh chamber meetings. Um, we'll find a, we'll find ways to to do just that to and um make sure that we get the word out for for public comment to be heard.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, isn't the two week public comment period uh starting tomorrow on short term rentals?
That's correct, Councilmember Rodenberg. It's a perfect segue to, it opens up.
So that would be a great I, uh great opportunity for everyone to reach out to people that you know have ideas one way or another to uh make the public comment and it'll go straight to council.
Yes. Okay, Katrina, or yes, uh Councilmember Barber. You're on mute.
Being the completely new kid, I'm like in my second week for all the um commissioners. Do we want public comment about STRs to go to city council or to the Planning Commission?
The the comment will be going to the Planning Commission and compiled, but we will send a copy to the council so that you're aware of the the nature and the amount of testimony that's received.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't at cross purposes by going out and telling people to send it to the council address, but instead to the one that is noticed.
Yes, send it to the one on the website, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Katrina, did you have anything else for the good of the order?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank everybody for taking this um past sixty minutes to um meet and greet each other and talk about the priorities. And it's very um heartwarming to know that there's so many people that care about our community and how we're going to grow uh and how we're going to retain the character and what we're going to focus on. So I think that this is a a kickoff, a really great kickoff of things to come uh over the, at least the next two years, which is what those priorities were for.
Yes, I agree. Thank you again, everyone, for being here tonight. And I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good night, everyone. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, bye.
Good night.
Thank you.